Okay, stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and that is what we're delivering justice for all.
If you see, I'll record your mics to you. I think that could be better.
Okay, if I can call it to order now. I know we need to go across some rules for the horse barn and some track rules that we would like to make some changes in the leases. In front of you, you will have a copy of the current lease for the city. You will have a copy of some recommendations by the barn. By the barn secretary, that is the manager of the barn. And you also see a copy of regulations by another track on what they require. I believe we could take between the three and come up with a new set of a new lease agreement with some changes. Once the lawyer has a chance to take a look at them and make sure that everything is good. Do you want to go through these one by one? How do you want to handle it or does everybody want to take a chance to look at it?
I think if we all take a chance to look. Have one more copy.
Would you like a copy Scott?
I got one up here.
No, no, no.
No.
Oh, that's a different thing.
Yeah.
I feel like the lease that's in place now is more like a generalized blanket rather than a more targeted.
The lease now basically looks like somebody that would be leasing, leasing a house. It's all the legal. And they've just put in a few things about the horses. And yes, I agree that we could make some changes that will make it more suitable, make the grounds look better, be maintained better, and be safer for the horses.
Thank you.
And the people that are utilizing the track. Is it such a thing that we can, do we have to go through? Or is this something that can be added as like amendments to the lease that we have now?
If you want to do an amendment, you can write those in. Or if you want to just go one by one and take, you know, whatever you want to change for each one. Or if you want to do a full amendment, you can do that as well.
Well, the very beginning of this barn rules and regulations where it says attention. I believe that is very important that we must have emergency information on file about who the owners are. Because if, we hope it doesn't ever happen, but if the barn should catch on fire or if a horse should get out and we needed to notify somebody, this committee would have no idea really who to notify.
And at that point, probably if it's in the middle of the night, there's nobody going to be at City Hall that's going to be able to say the emergency contact for the owner of horse in stall five is this specific number. There should be something, I agree, it needs to be in the barn so that any of us or anybody, the police department could go out. Say a horse gets out in the middle of the night and is walking down the middle of Broad Street. You're not going to be, who's going to be able to get up with the owner of the horse to try to get it? And at that point, then it becomes a liability issue. Is it the horse owner's responsibility that somebody strikes it with a car? Or is it our responsibility because somebody might have went in there and let it out? That's why I feel, I feel there should be a.
I think it's going to be cut in three places.
I, I agree with you that it needs to, not only does City Hall have that information with the lease on file, but it should also be there that anybody that walks into barn could call the owner of the horse to let them know, hey, your horse is out. Or there is an issue, your horse has gotten called up. Because otherwise, none of us are going to know.
And you can't, you can't make veterinarian decisions for somebody else's animal. A vet would never accept it. Like say if a horse got loose, got cut, and you know where he is.
So where do you want to add it in here? So do you have separate barn area that I don't have? Or this is just the whole?
That's, that's what I was asking you if you wanted, yeah, I was trying to get your attention, I'm sorry.
Those are suggestions that we need to add to our lease. And how you want to add them to the lease would be something, I guess, the lawyer needs to tell us. Or if you're proficient enough to say that if you want to add these things to the lease, how do we need to go about?
Okay, where do you want to add it?
I mean, there's so many different things that that pertains to, like the emergency contact. I mean, it just depends on what part of that you're talking about. We can add them as, as your parts, one through twenty-seven. Make an addendum to it.
Okay, just tell me, just say where you want to put it and I'll write it in and then we'll turn it all into, so that way it can be reviewed. So if you want to add.
I looked at Judge Ray on the 12. I thought we put it around 12, but 312, it talks about liability.
Yeah, number 12 on page three.
The one in your head is mine. Oh, that's, this is yours.
Yes, this is.
This is my suggestion. Because a lot of mine are more rules rather than agreements. So I'm not exactly sure how that was coming together. My daughter has horses boarded at her home. And she has an agreement with them. And in her agreement, they have two or three emergency contacts. Where is she to make a note? I called, I left a message, I text. After a certain amount of time, I have the right to call a vet for the welfare and well-being of your animal. And the leasie has to sign off on that. I mean, the same as when, when kids come on your bus, do you? The parent hands off the ability to take the kid to the doctor. Then it arises.
Down where it says horse care and management. The number eighteen on the present lease is for, they are responsible for keeping the stalls clean and neat. I think that's where we need to add the number six. That's on the document that says horses must be properly fed, watered, and cared for daily.
And there's this number eight, no. The township says which? Ten. So we're trying to figure out if we want to make addendums to the lease in place? If we want to totally replace it? Or just somehow merge ideas off? About sum it up?
Yeah.
Stephanie, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the barn rules and regulations on your, I think, one, general conduct. Is this all that you want posted inside the barn? Is that what you're looking to add inside the barn?
So if you notice the last page, yes, that would, that would be good on a, on a big, appropriate two foot by three foot sign. But if you notice on the last page, what I did was, in an effort to get everybody to conform, to get the actual lease in their hand, they have to read the rules, keep the rules, and then give you the signed copy that they received.
We do that with our leases. We, they have to initial every single page that they've read the rules and regulations for the apartments. So I don't think that's a far-fetched idea to do that. It's more paperwork for whoever's going to be doing it. But then they can't say that they didn't know anything about it.
Bingo.
I apologize if you covered this before I got here, but what are you doing about?
We didn't cover much.
Okay, well, what are you doing about the, the racers being ignorant to the, like the rodeo people and stuff that wanted to rent the stalls for a night?
We didn't even get there yet.
Okay, so you didn't cover that, that altercation?
No, this is literally as far as we got. We can't even make a decision on how we want to go forward with making changes to the lease.
The, the lease base, if, that the city has now is all terminology of the leasie and the leaser. And it's all liability. And basically, from what I'm seeing, is what the lawyer's going to look at and say, this is what you've got to have. And what Stephanie has come up with is rules and regulations that need to be put in place for the safety of the horses, the horsemen.
Public.
The public. And just general care and maintenance on the facilities. The biggest thing is we can sit here and make all kinds of decisions, but when the lawyer looks at it, he might say, no, you can't do this, or yes, you can.
Well, yeah. I, I, I mean, my question about it is going to be, is, is, is the plan still to, for the city to do this? To do the leases with the stalls? Is, is this, is this how it's going to go? Like, or is it, or is it better just to lease the whole place out to one trainer and let him sublet the stalls to whoever he's training and then it'll be one fee? That trainer's responsible for it and then we can do away with all the individual? Like a regular training barn? Does that work in the racehorse world?
Yes.
Well, can you just do that?
Somebody asked me about it last night.
I mean, there's somebody there right now that has seven horses, eight horses, whatever he's got in there. Why don't we just lease the whole barn to him? And then, and then it's a sublet situation where you're not chasing everything down. You're dealing with one person. You re, you lease the barn to that one person and then you don't have to mess with it. You don't have to worry about filling stalls, you don't have to worry about any of that stuff. You lease it to the trainer and then he's responsible for all that. And then it's all just his horses in there.
I mean, that's all well and good, but now suppose he comes up with the same problem. If he goes, if John is renting the entire barn, the trainer John is renting the entire barn. And Bob refuses to clean, feed, or water his horses. What is his recourse?
It's on the trainer.
And if, if his recourse fails, what's his?
It's on the trainer. It's on, it's fully on the trainer. Like, okay, so every time I.
He puts you out for thirty minutes, you're out for thirty minutes?
Every time I've been to a training barn, it's always a rented situation. So the trainer rents the barn from the, from the owner. Anytime that that trainer has a problem with that horse, that person, that whatever, that trainer terminates that agreement. That trainer boots you out. The landowner doesn't get involved. It's not the landowner's lawyer fees, it's not the landowner's anything. The landowner deals with that trainer. And that trainer wants a certain type of cleanliness or certain type of whatever in his barn. So he's going to go, he's going to make sure everybody's going to, or he's going to hire stall, stall cleaners or he's going to hire, like, he's going to run that barn like it's his barn.
Okay, so, so same question, but suppose we, as the fair board, or they, as the city, don't agree with how that trainer is keeping the barn, what's our recourse?
Then it's just a termination with the, with the whoever that tenant is. It's just whatever the deal is, if the city's got to lease it for a year to that trainer, or if it's a thirty day rule or whatever the deal is, you're just terminating the lease with that one, with that one person and then all of his stuff leaves. You're only, then you're only evicting one, you're not evicting individual horses.
Twenty-one, twenty-one stalls, twenty-one trainers.
Right, you're not, you're not going after, and then, and then your lease is with this guy, but this is the horse owner. So legality reasons, if you're evicting this person, but this is the horse owner, that horse can stay. So it's a huge, to me, just from what I know, and, and, you know, everybody knows where I'm third generation landlord-tenant person. So it, it's not, to me, I don't feel that, I, I think this is part of the whole issue. I would just lease it to one trainer, get the rules and regs, get the lease with one trainer, let that trainer handle it. And then if he wants to allow another trainer to have a stall or two, that's between them. He's putting his neck on the line for that person.
But at, at that point, you're leasing the whole barn, so that person's paying for all twenty-one stalls.
Yep, it would be two, twenty-one hundred dollars, one check, the end. It's his job to make his money.
I mean, there's nothing that stops that from happening now.
You can do a progressive, you could do a progressive if, if, you know, you have somebody in that barn right now that has five, ten stalls or whatever. You can do a progressive and say, hey, look, you know, we'll charge you X amount because you're a new upcoming trainer, but at this increment, it's going to be here. In a year, it's going to be here, eighteen months, it's going to be here, whatever. You can increment it up if you want to. I mean, there's plenty of landlords that do that for new businesses all the time. So you could do that and then it would be one tenant. And then you, you're dealing with one person.
But let's go back to who's then responsible for the maintenance of the barn.
Your, the maintenance is always going to be on the landowner. I, I don't care who says what, but unless you specifically put in your lease that that tenant is responsible for whatever maintenance or anything like that, you, you are always responsible for your facility. Whether you're a rental person, whether it's a single family homes, whether it's apartment buildings, whether it's commercial rented properties, whoever owns that building is responsible for it. Unless you put in the lease that it's up to the tenant for XYZ, the landowner is always responsible for their facility and what they are putting forward. Now, the rent can reflect that, but it is always on the landowner. It doesn't, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter what the tenant does. It's always on the landowner.
I trust we don't think that there's anybody currently who may be able to take over the whole barn? I mean, is it discussion for in the future? That I actually have somebody, a 11th earlier last night.
I mean, you don't know that. You, you haven't put it out there.
The other thing is, we've got to see whether the city is going to agree to rent the barn to one individual and allow them to sublet it. Because based on their agreement now, if you have, you can't sublet a stall.
Well, based on their agreement now, then most of their tenants, except for one that I know of, is in violation anyway. Because it's in the trainer's name and it's the horse owner that, so you're literally, it's with, if you go to evict that trainer, that trainer's going to be, okay, I'm out. But the horse owner doesn't have to get it, it doesn't have to leave the horse. Horse owner doesn't have to remove that horse because that lease is not with that owner. So the court's going to look at that and be like, yeah, no, that, that's not the name. That's why the leases in the state of Maryland have to have every single person, or it has to say and occupants, or it has to say something like that. There, you're not going to get them, you, you won't win that eviction case.
Brandy, Brandy and I had this conversation about two weeks ago. Whether it was, who is responsible for signing these lease agreements? Is it the owner or is it the trainer? And, I mean, people train, change trainers like socks.
Sure.
You know, you, you didn't win, I'm changing, and you could do that every week, you could do that every day.
Now.
Doesn't cost you anything.
Did Brandy tell you, or can you tell me, is the lease with the owner, the trainer, or just anybody that shows up and says, I want to put a horse in the barn?
I do not know.
According, according to the list that I got the other day, it's whoever comes in and signs a lea, it's whoever comes in and signs up, because a couple of them are not the owners. They're just who signed, they were.
The, the young man that she's referring to. Correct. The, the young man that she's referring to has eight horses in there, and I think he owns two of them.
So six of them are somebody else?
He's running a training barn out of your, uh, he's running a training facility out of your barn, out of the city's barn, is what he's doing.
Right.
Which, so he's getting char, he's getting paid for training that horse, making profit on it, and then we're charging rent, which is fine. I'm not against that at all, but we'd be clear on that, that's, that's how business works and how capitalism is. I'm just saying, if you were to, if you were to give him specifically, or anybody that's up and coming trainer, an opportunity to rent a barn and say, hey, you could fill your extra stalls, and it would be your terms, you could hire your own stall cleaner, you could hire your own wash groomer, whatever the deal is, and run it as a training facility. I, I think that would go a long way, because then somebody is gonna take pride in the entire place, not just their couple stalls that they have. Cause they would, they're gonna put their name on the barn. Fair Hill does it. Every one of those trainers has a barn at Fair Hill, and that is their horses, their racehorses are in that barn, and that's, that's their barn. So they're charged a flat rate for their barn. If their stalls are full, they're making money. If their stalls are empty, they're not making money. But they are responsible for their barn. All the upkeep, broken windows, um, you know, rain rot, and et cetera, et cetera, is on Fair Hill to upkeep that barn, because they are getting the rent.
The benefit of having some of it.
Right, they're getting the rent from the trainer.
But going with that?
All the big racehorse facilities do it. So you guys will take that.
The young lady who came in the other day and wanted two stalls for one night.
That would be up to whoever.
He can say no.
Yeah, he can say no.
Which I mean, we were all aggravated with, because they literally shut the door, basically, literally.
I mean, I'm not aggravated that they, I'm not aggravated that the door was shut. I'm aggravated that a tenant decided to shut the door from the landlord revenue. That's what I'm aggravated about. Now, if that barn was rented, the entire barn was rented to somebody, and they decided to shut the barn doors, then that's fine. But if you have a tenant that is chasing away other tenants, and the city is losing money because of another tenant chasing away other business, that's not okay to me. Especially if that horse had all of their shots, their cobbins, their whole nine yards, which they do,
They did.
Cause they have to have that for the rodeo circuit. But to me, that would avoid that whole incident, because that would be that trainer's barn.
But now, who, who did they go to? They just went to?
Me, Steffi. Well, they, they messaged the fair page, yeah.
You gave her permission, and then the people in the barn denied her to come in there.
Correct, yep.
Correct. And truly, I was not going to charge her anything. She was gonna be in there a matter of like six hours.
Yeah.
She just wanted them someplace where they would be safe. She came in at four o'clock in the morning, they weren't performing until six o'clock at night. She performed that night, kept them there overnight, and then they performed again. She got in her trailer, and she left. And she had twice as much paperwork that we need as San Diego Racehorse people, twice as much.
But you're gonna run into that problem. So, I mean, you can't really get mad at the, at the people in the barn for wanting to protect their horses, because they don't know anything about these people, the horses, the whole nine yards. And they figure, you're coming in by night, we have athletes in this barn, it's our money, blah, blah, blah. I mean, you can argue both sides of it, but you would avoid that whole situation by doing it that way.
Now, they could've used the portable stalls that we used during the racing.
The ones outside?
I'm just asking.
Could have, we didn't give them an option of that, as far as I know.
They're, they're, they're what's referred to as standard stalls.
Okay.
And they have to be tied up. That would've been just been, if you, you saw how they were kept, they just put a string of, on poles, and they stayed within that perimeter.
I mean, that, that's just my idea. Like, I, cause I used to work for, I mean, I used to work for Michael Metz, right? So he, right, he had, he leases a barn at, at Fair Hill, or at, at Fair Hill Stables. And that's what they get. They get race time, they get, you know, a time on the track, they have, they have their, um, there are people that tack up the horses, hot walk them, et cetera, et cetera. Like, they have a whole, a whole crew. But they, that's how they charge it as well. So, I mean, if you wanna run it as a racehorse barn and not a boarding facility, the racehorse barn would make more sense than a boarding facility. It's a lot less work, too. It's the landowner's the landowner. You're responsible for-
You'd be dealing with one township, would you be dealing with one person?
You're dealing with one person. You're dealing with one person, one person's on the lease, they're responsible for the whole thing. It's their deal, and the only thing you do is the maintenance. That's it. That's all you do. You don't, it doesn't matter how many horses are in that barn, you don't care. It doesn't matter how many hor, if they're, it doesn't matter if they have their, their credentials or not. It doesn't matter, any, none of that crap matters. It doesn't matter who owns it, it doesn't matter anything. Your deal is with that trainer.
Okay. Being we don't know whether the city wants to do that, whether we want to recommend them to do that. If that's the case, then we don't need to sit here tonight and go about this.
Right, and catch that up.
We need to put out to the city, I guess, to entertain with the horsemen that are in the barn, if they wanna do that. Or if the city, the mayor and council wants to do, handle the barn that way, so that way they only have one person to interact with. And basically, then you can redo, I really feel that these barn rules and regulations need to be incorporated into this lease. Um, so that way, whether you're leasing to one person or to
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one different people, I feel, after looking at them, they, they are all viable things. And it might be such a thing that the mayor and council may want to have the lawyer look at it to say, this is where it needs to be versus us trying to figure out where to put it, and then he say, that's not, that's not what needs to happen. And my, Scott's over there shaking his head, yeah, he thinks that's the right.
I mean, you're all gonna make some decisions, and like you said, the lawyer, I mean, he's gonna come back with suggestions somewhere, I don't know.
I, I mean, I, I guess it really is, is gonna be whatever, I mean, what I've noticed from the other committees in this city is that this committee makes a suggestion to mayor and council, pleads a case, whatever, and then when it's discussed, it's like, this is why we chose this way. And then if they grant that, then we go back to work on this, so that we're not
Spinning wheels.
Setting it all up or whatever. But we can have a, we can have a, a general idea, cause like if they say, if we go there and we say we wanna rent the whole barn, well, one person's not gonna pay twenty-one hundred dollars or whatever. We can say, well, we can charge them, you know, right now, we can charge them a, a grand. And then, you know, come springtime, it'll go up to fifteen hundred, and then come a year for, a year in, it'll go up to the full twenty-one or whatever it is. Because really, if you have one trainer, you also don't need to have all those different tax stalls. Cause not everybody's, like, you don't-
Like, you need one horse and six pack stalls, it's not a-
Yeah, you don't need all, you don't need all that stuff. So now you're not taking up extra stalls for tack crap. Like, it, there's no, you're gonna have one trainer. Huh?
It's not even tack crap.
Well, either way, it's just whatever you have, storage facility, whatever, I mean.
And if he wants to, he, he wants to rent out a stall for storage and charge it like two hundred bucks, that's his business.
That's his prerogative. That's his prerogative. If you lea, if you lease it to him, that's his prerogative, as long as there's nothing unsafe, whatever, explosives, blah, blah, blah. And it, then it really, I mean, that would, that would simplify this whole situation.
Yeah, it would.
It would be a, a, a lease to one trainer, rent out the whole barn, and then the rest of the grounds give a lease to the, to the, uh, fair committee, Inc., for it, and then we're, we're done. We're done with this.
I got a question.
What?
There's a gentleman who I know, every January writes out a check for twelve hundred dollars for the entire year.
Yeah.
What happens then?
Less late. Well, if somebody, if somebody's doing that, then his, it's non-renewal. His lease is not renew-
He's there until January, and you can't rent out that stall to anybody else.
If they decide it, if they decide that, then that would be what the rules are. If he's playing, if he's paying a year of the year, and it's a twelve month lease, then yeah, and in November, he would say, you know, uh, City of, he'd get a notice that says, City of Moque has, um, decided not to renew the lease. The terms end on whatever date, and that's that, um, you know, whatever. And then you could, if you ask the trainer, you could say, hey, look, we wanna at least let this guy have an option to stay, whoever decides. And then let them negotiate it out. You're out of it.
I, I do have, um, a question that you may or may not be able to answer. In all the years past, normally the barn gets, all gets refreeed.
I have no-
Because they put up with the
The fair?
Fair.
The fair. And all the years past, if you're a renter and you're there, I guess by a certain date, you get August for free, because you put up with the, um,
Inconvenience of having.
Inconvenience, thank you. Inconveniences of having the fair. That's always been, it's always been a thing. I don't really know.
That would be a question for actually, for-
Brandy, Brandy or Frank, steady appointment.
Brandy, or to look back in the records, because if that's the case, then why is the guy paying for August if he gets it for free?
That's, that's what just made me think of it, was he usually pays twelve hundred dollars or eleven hun, I, it could be eleven hundred. But he pays one check at the beginning of the year, or it be eleven or twelve, I don't know.
But if that's the case, because I've never heard of that in the past. Because up until this year, the fair only was three days.
I know, and so they gave them the entire month for three days, which was, I said this hour the other day, I can't believe how much they're rife then when they get the entire month for free.
Right, right, so.
I don't know much, I can't believe how much they grip anyway for a hundred dollars a month rent. I mean, they don't wanna know what I pay for my horse's rent.
I know what you think, your horse's rent. But there's different facilities, and.
Okay. Do we want to make recommendation to the city to look at these rules? To have the lawyer look at these, to see how we wanna put them into the lease?
Yes, please.
Where the appropriate place is that way, cause I don't know that you just wanna s, insert certain things any particular place with, because then it's not gonna, the lease is gonna jump all over the place. I feel somebody that handles that on a regular basis should look at that and say, this is how it should be done.
We're gonna be handling this two different pieces. If, if you're leasing with this paper, you have to sign off on these rules and regulations in addition to.
That's, that's viable, that if, when you sign this lease, you have to agree to these rules? Um, that might be a better way to look at it, um, that they go hand in hand. And that might be how you, the city wants to have the lawyer look at it, and he might say, that's right, or no, we have to incorporate it all together. I'm not the legal guru on that. That's what he gets paid for.
Well, I'll make a motion that we have this in the year.
Uh-uh, uh-uh, this is not an actual meeting, this is just a work session. No motion.
Oh, you were, you were, it's like, we don't have to make motions.
No motions today. It's, this is just a work session. Um, so that's kinda where we are with the, the barn and the track rules, um, barn cleanliness and upkeep. I've had a conversation with the mayor, af, he was in the barn during the fair, and I won't use the exact words that he used about the barn. Um, but the cleanliness of the barn, after talking with him and Brandy, is is gonna come back, parts of it's gonna come back on the city. In the aspect, being they, as he put it, the people are renting the stall, so they're only renting one room in the house, they're not renting the whole house. So the upkeep of the rest of the house is up to the landowner. So all the cobwebs need to be addressed by public works, is the just that I have gotten from both the mayor and Brandy. Um, now, my question is for you, Stephanie, as some, as the manager of the barn, what is the best way to do away with all the cobwebs? Is it with a broom? Is it power washing? Is it with a high-power blower? Because at, depending on how it is, depends on, we're gonna need to either move all the horses to half the barn, clean one half, and then move them to the other half, or gonna have to find a day to have all the, if it's power washing, you're gonna need all the horses out, all the tack, and all of their feed, and everything removed from the barn on one given day, or two, two days.
I thought power washing was the answer, but when you look at that, and the logistics involved in moving horses and equipment and feed and hay and bedding, I don't think power washing's the answer.
I personally don't think that power washing the inside of a building with electrical outlets is the answer either.
Correct.
That's my personal opinion, yeah.
That's another part of that.
We do, we do, we do it in a chicken house.
Yeah, that's true.
I, I don't, you can't do it with a regular ladder. You can't really do it in an extended room, it's kind of a bit. Um, we did a fair amount of it when we were there over the course of four Ds, and it doesn't look like we touched it. And that was with a twelve-foot long pole and towel attached to it. I, I don't, I don't know what the answer is.
I think you should get some, I think you should get a price on a commercial, somebody with a commercial vacuum to come in and do that, because if you don't, and you do it any other way, you're gonna get this and that in their lungs, this and that, they're gonna get, uh, anti-bacterial stuff getting destroyed. I think the only thing you're going to, like, there's gonna be a plethora of crap that goes along with it. And logistics of moving horses, and moving the tack, and moving the hay, and moving the feed, and, um, then if something happens, and then et cetera, et cetera, the power getting shut off, shut up back on, uh, you know, just all of those things, i- in my opinion. I think you should just, because of the, those horses being in that barn, and it, and it being a horse barn, and it not being like, you're able to empty the whole thing out, I think you should look at somebody like a commer, like commercially coming in and vacuuming it all out. Because if you look at that, it's like kicked on, the tin. So you're gonna have somebody in your, it's probably gonna take them, you know, three, four days to do it, but it is what it is. I mean, you have to make the adjustment. You're, the, the, the city is the landowner, they, they, they're responsible for the property. That's just how it is.
But I was gonna say, but going forward, like, the residents have to-
As long as you keep up with it, it should be fine.
That's what I was gonna say, as long as the tenants, then they're help keep it clean.
Yeah, as long as you keep up with it, it should be fine.
I don't know where they became like in charge and they're doing what they wanna do.
I just came from the barn a while ago. There's bicycles, tire, wheelbarrow tires, and all kinds of, and all kinds of things just laying there beside the barn, like somebody just cleaned out their-
We did. That was in the stall.
Cleaned out?
I offered to put it all back. He said, no, leave it.
It needs to go somewhere. I'm not sure if we stole-
But that was another conversation we had. There is, we opened a stall that has not been open in five years, and the guy left all his stuff in there.
If it's been in there for five years, it's, it needs to go to the dump. It need to, in my opinion, their trash truck needs to just-
Well, how has it been left in there for five years if they go pay a rent on that stall? Well, why hasn't something been done before five years?
Five years, it always been gone. I don't know. I, I think there also has to be something, that's why I said in, in the new rules that I came up with, that you have X amount of time to deal with your stuff.
Yeah, this lease doesn't have any-
Or it becomes the city's, and it becomes garbage.
Right. This lease doesn't have any of that, any of that cut and dry in it, and I don't know what, I do not have any type of, I don't know anything about leases as far as, um, animal barns, differentiating from commercial and residential. But I can tell you that if I went to evict a tenant out of one of my resident, my residential properties, the judge would eat this alive. And they would have to stay. I would be made, like, that tenant would win this, any cases with this lease, day in and day out.
Okay, so.
Cause nothing is specific here. There's nothing specific. It's not, you have to have your stuff out within a certain amount of days. There's no specifics on, you know, like bikes being in the barn. There's nothing here that says that bikes can't be in the barn. There's nothing here that says that, that there's, you know, it's, that's a transportation device.
There's settling tanks in the barn.
Yeah, there's no, but there's nothing in here that says nothing dangerous, flammable, et cetera, in the stables. Um, it just says no charcoal fires or open fires. It doesn't say any flammable, um, tanks, any, any flammable, uh, you know, like, there's a lot of stuff. This, this lease is old, 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 old. So there's a lot in here that I, that, like, me looking at it as- You know, like, there's a lot of stuff, this, this lease is old, 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 so there's a lot in here that I, that, like, me looking at it as a landlord. And leases are our thing and we go, and we deal with a lot of tenants and a lot of, and, and different, three different states and I just, the way that Maryland is a tenant-friendly state. This, this lease would be, you would, they, you wouldn't win with this lease, if this is what you went for to get somebody out.
As a landlord, who, a person either left or was evicted, whi- whichever the case.
We have to post it, you have to post it and you have to send them a certified letter of whatever is on, is on file and it has to say that you have X amount of days to contact us. In writing or in person, if you are not contacted, your things will be discarded, et cetera, et cetera, like, there's a whole process for this.
How long, how long are they give?
Uh, for residential stuff, it's thirty days.
Thirty days? Mm-hmm.
Our lease is actually having it that, that there is a ten-day, that there is a ten-day, um, like, if we can't get ahold of them for ten days and we post something. Then we're allowed to take the next step, which is remove their stuff and put it into storage. And then we have to have it in storage for thirty days and then we can, like, it's a whole process, wait, Maryland is very tenant-friendly, very much so.
I mean, ten days, thirty days versus five years.
Correct, but you have to have somebody on that, that's why I'm saying, like, this whole thing.
Okay.
That, I would just.
I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
A- and we need, we're gonna have the lawyer address, looking at this to see what can happen, what we can do, um, we're gonna make those recommendations to the city and the mayor and council, um.
I also have a question that goes with that, so like, if you were to keep the barn to set up the way that it is right now, who's?
For a person.
Fine, whose job is that? Whose job is it to count the horses, whose job is it to make sure the barn's up kept, whose job is it to take the pictures, write the violations, send the certified letters, all that stuff, like, how, whose job is that? And if it's the cities, who is giving them that information or who is, is that your job to give them that information?
It's, it's not part of us.
And then we're using city resources on that and we're only charging a hundred dollars a month, and we're in a hole, like, it, you see what I'm saying?
I mean, Brandy asked me to get the names of the people who are there renting now, I gave her the names.
So that's part of.
And then the next step was, what are their addresses?
If they signed a lease, they should have the addresses, if they're, if they're not leasing, then they need to find out.
But that.
And if it's somebody training a horse and they say, oh, the owner's supposed to come do it, then we need to have some kind of authority to, you can't train here. Because your horse can't legally be here because we don't have a lease agreement.
But that's the problem, there's a catch twenty-two, are we leasing to trainers or are we leasing to owners?
I feel that the lease needs to be with both, that it should have the trainer, name and address, because if, that way both people are liable. Because both of them are interacting with that horse, and that's a question for the lawyer is.
Well, if you.
The, the lease should be with both people and if the owner fires the trainer, then they add a new name, phone number. Because now that person has now become our emergency contact, because.
So my, my question to your, to that Dean is, if you're the trainer and you have two horses in the barn and one of your horses isn't paying, but the other one's paying, if you are evicted, you're kicked off that other horse too. By law, you're off the property, so you can't train anymore if that, if, like, you can't be in that barn, you're evicted, you would have to reapply and go through the whole situation again. Unless you specified stall A one or stall to be C two.
That, that, that's up to the trainer to specifically, if they've got that many different owners in there, I feel that the trainer to cover their self. Says that this agreement is with the horse in stall one, this agreement over here is with the horse in stall five, this one's in seven, this one's in thirteen. My, one of my questions that I have, but for you also Stephanie, is can we lock the stalls that don't have horses in it so that way people aren't bringing them in without coming up here? And getting some, signing the lease and getting somebody to go unlock it?
Well, why not, but that's none of me question.
Well, that is, that is.
Again, that one stall had a lock-in on it until last year and somebody finally cut it.
That. That is something that I feel that the mayor and council needs to entertain as a suggestion, that way because.
It's a good idea.
I feel we have some people that if they know that on the first of the month, Bill East goes there.
After lunch.
And counts horses, that they're gonna take it out.
On the thirty-first.
Take it home, take it somewhere, it might be at the track running and then he comes back in and now there's own, he, when he counts, there's ten horses. I just left the barn and there's twelve horses there, so I don't know what rent's being paid and depending on when he count, somebody could end up with having a horse there for a month. Or twenty-nine days, thirty days, if it's thirty-one days, if he counts on the first, rent free.
Well, there's gotta be a way to easier, there's gotta be an easier way to do that too, because there, there should be some sort of programming, like, for, for us, for our management company. They know on the fly if an apartment is rented or not, so there's gotta be a way to know or have a list of who is in that barn where they're supposed to be when you go check. Or, like, there should be a running list of something, there's gotta be more of that somewhere.
If you look at the lease, they are asso- assigned stalls.
Correct.
And I can guarantee you, out of the twelve stalls that are now there, only eight of them are in the stalls or such.
Correct, but have you been handed something and said, here's Steph, here's what's supposed to be in the barn? Okay, well, there's gotta be something like that drawn up too, is that your job, is that their job, who's doing that, and then who's, every time somebody pays, are they letting you know? Or are you supposed to call here every month and get that, like, how, there's gotta be some sort of streamlined thing here because the way that this is going isn't working. So there's gotta be something, or like, if you come in on the first and there's only nine of them that's paid, there's twelve stalls in the barn, are you evicting those three, who's sending them the late notices? Who's sending them the certified letters that, hey, you're late, it's five days to pay or you're getting a quit notice, who's doing all that, that stuff?
I don't know, but I know within the last four or five months, they've lost four or five hundred dollars a month.
At least lost money, and then, and then we're sitting here putting all this money into the barn and stuff and it, it's just, I.
The barn's not good business.
No, you can't run a business this way, and then, and then wonder why it's in the rent, you can't, you can't run a business this way, so if it's our job to make this business work.
It is. It, it, it's.
Then we're, we're gonna have to write our suggestions or, or has to happens or whatever down and give it to them and say, this is how it's gotta be because we, we can't, we can't help otherwise.
And it's gotta be enforced.
And that's. Yeah, who's.
It's gotta enforce.
And, and I, I asked who enforces it, what, what, what simple rules are in place now, I asked who enforces that and I don't really have an answer.
I, I.
I mean, I don't feel like I have any authority to go to.
You don't, you have.
Joe's mom and go, hey.
You don't have any.
Your stuff's a mess, clean it up.
You don't have any authority.
The lease isn't with you.
Correct, all you can do is kinda be like a policing agency and then at some point, somebody with the city has the authority to go see. For example, John Smith has a horse in there in his stall, he's got crap laying everywhere, he's got five or six extension cords plugged in. Laying on top of a bale of hay, which is a fire hazard, and I have seen that before, uh, where they've had, uh, surge suppressors. Laying right on top of a bale of straw with two or three battery chargers for the leaf blowers. So they can put their batteries in and blow out the aisle way, blow out the stall or whatever, but it's sitting on top of a bale of straw. The barn burnt down once, common sense, you're gonna burn it down again if you do that stupid stuff. And I said something to them, oh, yeah, 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 I, I, I'll change that. They're your.
But it never changed.
They're your animals or you're taking ca- the animals are in your care, you got to have some common sense and do a little bit better. Um, but we gotta find out, if they don't, who's gonna go in and s- and give them a verbal, you gotta change this. And then go back later on, a month later and say, hey, I thought you said you were gonna do something about this, if it's because the electrical outlet's not working. Then notify me and we'll get it fixed.
Can we, can we do that, Dean, can we, can us four agree? This is, this is how, um, like a, like you, like you're saying, like, a, a warning system, you get one verbal, you get three written, you get a.
It, it, it's just like, it's just like when you're an employee.
I'm, I'm just saying.
You get a verbal warning, a written warning, and, and then, and then gone.
I think it's gonna, it doesn't require it to be in writing.
As a job. Um, well, that way, here's your written notice and.
In the, in the, for, for landlord, for residential, commercial, it has to be the same violation more than once in a six-month period. So if you're gonna give them a write-up for stuff on top of a hay bale and they do it again in seven months and that's their second, now it starts, the clock starts back over again.
It's just, it's just like an employer, verbal warning, two written warnings and you can fire them if it's within six months. If it's, like she says, if it's seven months, you gotta start all over again.
I mean, I, I wouldn't give anybody verbals just because of the way that it, it's, it's very common sense, I wouldn't even bother with verbals, I would give them the written's and whoever's job it is for, to do the written's is, is what it needs to be, um.
And is, is that something that Mike, as your enforcement person for the city, is that something that he should be doing? I know Bill is the one that counts the horses, um, but how do we need to, because we need to streamline this. We need to get it so we know who's doing what, because like you said, the city's losing money. And the budget's tight, we're getting fussed at because we haven't raised enough money to cover the, the purses for the harness racing. But if we maintain getting all our rent, then we'll have rent income that can help pay for, the barn income can help pay for its own things.
Maintenance, its own maintenance.
Yeah, maintenance and, and even hopefully pay, help pay for the harness, the races that we do once a year, the purses. Because that's how it's always been in the past, that the income from the stall rent, the money that comes from the state. That we get from the unclaimed tickets, um, at the other racetracks where there is bedding. That is the money that pays for the maintenance on the track, the maintenance on the building, the maintenance on the grounds. And goes towards the purses, it's been like that for years. And we need to get back to that point that we're not in the red, we're in the black, but we, we need to do a better job.
Of policing.
Of policing the amount of renters that are in the barn.
And also, when you give them a complaint, you need to give it to the owner and the trainer, I think. That way the owner would be aware that their trainer isn't doing what they're supposed to be.
Right, I'm sure there's no owner anywhere wants their horse with a fire hazard.
You can legally only give it to the person that is the lease is with, you can't give, you can legally only give it to whoever's on the lease, you can't give it to both of them.
Well, if they're both named on the lease.
If, if they're both.
If they're both on the lease, then that's fine, but I'm just saying, you can, legally, you can only give it to them.
That, that is why I feel you wanna put both of them on the lease and if you end up, the trainer's not doing a good job and the owner cans them.
It's literally a phone call, train, changing trainers.
Then they can call in and change it and at that point, there needs to be an address received for the new trainer. And they need to be sent copies of the rules and regulations at that point, certified mail and the lease, so therefore you can't say, I didn't know.
Wasn't aware of.
And, and that's, I know that's more paperwork for somebody in the city, but that's something that we're gonna need to do to make it.
Make money.
Make money.
Paper itself, it's not even money.
And, and, and that, and that's, that's the key thing, it need, it needs to carry its own weight. Budget is tight and it needs to become a positive, not a negative.
Have another bad subject to bring up and it's mostly John's gonna have the answers, um, the stone dust that was delivered, which is now.
John's not gonna have any answers for that, John's not gonna have any answers to that at all.
He's the one that got moved.
They wouldn't talk to John, John called them all week long to get a delivery date and everything else with them, he went to them, tracked them down, well, John can speak, but John went to them, tracked them down.
Yep, they, they said it would be done, I started calling and nobody would return the call. I called the office, nobody was at their office on Friday night at five thirty, six o'clock, something like that. I said, well, I'm gonna go find them, I went to their office in Princess Anne, there was four or five guys there and working in the shop, I said, is Douglas around? No, wouldn't believe me back, don't know. So then, I was talking to a friend of mine on the phone, said, wait a minute, I got a friend of mine that knows one of his foremen. After I talked to one, to two, I finally got to number three, the foreman, and he said, no, they won't even take my call this week, they're away. And they won't be back till Monday. I said, we got horse racing Saturday at noon, the track is supposed to be done. And right now there is two tandem loads of crush and run dumped in the middle of the horse race track, what am I gonna do with it? He said, I will get a skid steer and move it Saturday morning, I'll be there about nine o'clock. He was there about twenty minutes and nine and moved it. And then Monday, I called twice before I got up with anyone. They said, well, I guess it was kind of a mix-up on our part, we thought the horse racing was the following weekend, which would have been last weekend. I said, no, you're a little late. I said, we've, we have moved it, but do not bring no more until you, we talk to you. He said, well, we, put it over there out of the way, but being in stone dust, you're gonna have to keep it sprayed, cuz once it gets weeds and grass in it. It's gonna be very hard to do anything with as far as grading it or spreading it.
Yeah, and we've lost a good amount of it now, losing.
Well, it doesn't even matter, they deliver, my argument was, they delivered it whenever the heck they delivered it.
One o'clock Friday afternoon, the horse was done.
Right, delivered it one o'clock Friday night afternoon, and even if the racing wasn't until the following weekend, you're telling me that none of those horses could get raced all week cuz there's, there's. Stone dust dumped in the middle of the track, that's unacceptable, that should have been handled, I don't know whose job it was to handle that, but, um, you know, the communication i- is not where it needs to be. With whoever is doing whatever and, and that was completely unacceptable for them to dump that, to not answer the phone, couldn't get ahold of anybody, and then what were we supposed to do? Those guys were not supposed to be able to race their horses for a week when they had a race upcoming in their own house, like, that, I, I mean, to, that's common sense, like, come on. That's un- completely unacceptable, that was, even if that was the understanding, you don't dump stone dust for a week and let it sit there. So I, I don't, I, I'm not.
And, and we've lost a fair amount of it in the moving it from here to here.
Yeah, you're never gonna get it out, you're never gonna get all of it out of the grass.
It might've, it might've been two tandem dump loads before, but now it's only gonna be one, a change.
You'll get one and three quarters out of mine.
But not two, two.
The, the, the biggest.
Two loads paid.
Two, two questions, a- and this is what we have to look at, one, we can have him come load it back up and take it away. Um, and see what he's gonna charge or not charge, what is gonna do there. The other thing is, I know when he puts stone dust on in the past, he dumps it in piles and takes a road grader and grades it out. After talking with a couple people at the fair this year. There, the other way that it can be done is we can grade the track, get the track where it needs to be. And they can spread the stone dust on top using like a lime truck or a lime spreader. I personally feel that's, coming from a farming aspect, that's a better way of applying it. Because you're not mixing your dust in with the sand that is on the top of the track, when you grade it, you put the dust on top, you wet it, you condition it for. Several days prior to the race and you. and you will have the track in the best shape that it should be in for the racing. I would think between, we need to figure out what we're gonna do with what's there, whether he wants to come get it, and us just not worry about putting stone dust on this year, and just add it for the track for next year, before the harness racing, which means your track for training is gonna be really soft. Because usually, we, we put the stone dust on once a year, right before the fair. That way, for the fair racing, the track is in the best shape that it's gonna be in. And then it's just maintained the rest of the year, and it's slowly, because the stone dust is gonna work its way in, and the track's slowly gonna deteriorate in the quality for the training. I guess we need to figure out what we're gonna do with what's there, and/or do we want to see if we can find a different person to apply the stone dust by spreading it, whether it's with a truck, a spreader, or I know Stephanie, you work at Ocean Downs, if we could, if you could find out who does Ocean Downs's, applies their stone dust, and see how they do it, um, and see if they would, what their fee would be for doing our track.
You could actually buy used stone dust, that's a thing.
Okay.
Uh, how many truck loads was there supposed to be?
He was gonna try to keep it around total bill of ten thousand dollars. He got the two loads of dust, and I have not heard what they cost, so.
It, it, it was this year, um, we tried to do a dollar figure, I know in the past, my father always got.
Had an amount.
Had an amount based off of the rent income and the money that had come from the state. He had a amount based on any maintenances that were done on the rest of the grounds. So he had an idea of what he would spend, some years he spent more on stone dust, some years he spent less on stone dust. It all depends on what other maintenance we had to do. I know one year, we had a culvert under the track that collapsed and had to pay, I know Dick Lynch came in, dug it up, fixed it, put a new culvert in, fixed the track back, and regraded it. You never even knew that he'd done anything. Um, that year, he didn't put as much into stone dust, 'cause you'd spent more on maintaining your track. Um, that's, this year, we were basically flying by the seat of our pants, because we didn't know, because Ms. Kit is no longer employed by the city, she's retired, and she was the lady that always gave Dad the figures of the money.
How much money you actually had, 'cause I would bring him in, and, um, he would want to know what, what was in the budget, um,
For the barn.
From, from the barn, and, uh, what you had received, and then he would go by what was, and what he had had gotten donated, um, from the different racetracks for the different races.
The simple way, find out how much stone dust you lost, get the two-way tickets, see what they are, have them loaded up, and go away, and see what they haul back out. That's the only way you'll know what you lost.
I mean, they prefer the inside hard and the outside loose and deeper anyway. I, I don't know, are you gonna make him mad if you go, I wanna return this, it wasn't, like, are, are we gonna cut a, cut a tie?
I mean, if you, if you're hired to do a job, and you don't get that job done, I mean, that's just, that's the way it goes, like, that's business, man, if you were supposed to get that job done by a certain time, but yeah, if it's on the customer for ordering it incorrectly, or whoever that was that did that, if they didn't order it properly, I mean, you gotta, you gotta see how that, how that, how that all goes, because we, none of us were involved in that. So, I mean, I, if I was that company and you told me the wrong date, I mean, I would argue that it's your screw-up, you're gonna eat it. So, it just, I mean.
Yeah, but we didn't tell him the wrong date.
None of us told him any.
Yeah.
So, I don't know what was ordered, what was told, what was negotiated, I don't know any of that. I have no idea, I don't, I don't know any of it, other than it showed up and.
And was in the way.
You know, yeah, and then we had a lot of angry racers and a lot of angry people, and they're like, what are you doing? And now we're taking it off the track, and you're chewing the track up, and blah, 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 and we got screamed at all morning, like, I, I don't, I don't even really, that wasn't fun for me.
Not fun for me either.
So, uh, you know.
Oh, I know, he was, he was losing it trying to get them to get it off.
What do you wanna do, John, you wanna just tell him to ship it back, or you wanna spread it?
See what he'll do.
I mean, if I was him, I'd tell you, I would tell you, you're stuck with it.
Get up, win it and see what he'll do, if he'll come get it, take it back, see what he'll do.
Probably for the trucking fee.
Oh yeah, there'll probably be a trucking fee for carrying it out of here.
So, we're gonna pay a trucking fee, why? I mean, I guess you gotta, you gotta figure out what we're paying in to have a pile of stone dust that we're gonna now figure out versus.
Yeah, you, you wanna, you wanna lose, you wanna lose six hundred dollars, or you wanna pay a grader come in for four grand or whatever that thing Dean's gonna cost? What do you wanna do, you wanna lose six hundred bucks, you wanna lose four grand, what do you, where are you at here? Cut your losses for your least amount of expense, that's where we're at, right?
I, I, I feel that whatever it takes to get it returned, then that's where we need to be, because we don't need it until next fair, realistically.
We don't need that ten thousand dollar, that ten thousand dollar bill, give them the trucking and ship it back. I mean, that's, that's where I'm at, take that ten thousand, put it back in the budget. We're already over budget anyway with the, with the repairs for the barn, the repairs needed for the barn, the, the purses, the this, that, the state cut the funding, like, we're, we're already, you, stop the bleeding. Stop the bleeding, let's get ahead of this, let's get the rent under control, let's get the expenses under control, let's get all of these things under control, you know, and then, and then piggyback on the fact that the races this year did go pretty well, and see if we can get a, jump on getting some sponsorships for next year, and then just see if we can kinda like get back on top here a little bit, 'cause this is just, don't keep it.
Yeah.
It's ten grand, send that stuff back, if we can, even if it costs the trucking. I mean, that's my opinion, what do you wanna do, John?
Send it back, if that's what you want, we'll send it back.
What, 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 what's your thought as the, the, the council representative?
The liaison.
I would send it back, and I would see if I, how, how the city ordered it, and if it's in writing, and they deliver it on the wrong date, uh, that'd be hard, that'd be hard to undo.
I don't think it's ever been put in writing when you deliver it.
Nah, that, that's always been a verbal.
Just, hey, I need this, and I need it by this date, and we're good to go.
Yeah, I don't know who put the, I don't know who would've put the order in, I'm sure there's a P O for it, don't you have to fill out a paperwork for that? 'Cause it's over a certain amount of dollars, wouldn't there be a P O for it?
Nobody wanted me to fill out a P O, I talked to Scott, Scott said they pay for it, ain't that what we told him about Scott?
What was it saying, yes?
Yeah.
I told Brandy, and Brandy's, 'cause you're trying to figure out how much to order, and Brandy told me that, to do what you,
Do what we do.
First you had to do, get it done, and.
And that was actually less than what was spent the year before.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's what, I mean, that.
So. John, if you'll take care of that, and see what he says, and you can let us know, and.
I'm trying to get up with him, saw him today, but I need to talk to him.
Um, we can let this, we can let Brandy know at the city to know what to expect, um, what's going on there, so he doesn't submit a bill for all of it, if it, if it's being returned.
See if I can get up with him in the morning.
Do we want to find out what it's gonna cost to clean the inside of that barn? And how it's gonna be done, to know what we need to do with the horses, the tack, the feed and everything, because it's not something we're gonna do tomorrow, it's been like this, this long, what's another month or so? But we need to, we need to find out, one, the price, two, what's gonna be involved for the horsemen, the horses, what, how we're gonna, the logistics to work it out, but definitely, we need to figure out something to clean the cobwebs out of that barn.
Also, those, uh, those two windows up top, they said that they already voted to fix those, so can you get them fixed too? 'Cause it was on their approval thing, or whatever the deal was, they said that they, they said that they voted to approve those two, so whatever that is, that, those two top windows.
Generally, generally, this time of year, they take those windows out, the horsemen take them out, so they can have the fans blowing to get the heat out of the barn.
Okay.
But I was in the barn a while ago, and you got all these fans blowing on the stalls, but none of the windows on the individual stalls are open, they're still closed. So, I'm not sure if we're just circulating hot air inside of a stall, or what we're doing, but I would think you would try to open the outside windows to let some air in, but maybe I'm
Yeah, I don't know.
Not looking at it the right way.
I don't know.
Um, but yes, I'll see, I'll see about getting the same gentleman that replaced the other windows, about having something, and so we can take them out, so they can turn the fans on when it gets hot. But then, that would be probably something that, when they take them out, they need to be stored in the office. And when it starts to get cool, one of the city employees would need to put the windows back in, because you're gonna probably need to be on an extension ladder, or at least a tall step ladder. I'm being, I'm vertically challenged, so it's not me without something to get me elevated. Yeah, something, um, and I agree with that. Um, the other thing is, we need to, winter will be here before we know it, we need to make sure that the doors close, the garage doors are open and closing, that way, we don't have any frozen pipes. Um, and it is their responsibility to close the doors. In my opinion, if you can't close the door, don't complain that the pipes froze. That did happen last year.
Are the pipes heat taped? No.
No.
Should they be?
Generally, it doesn't get that cold for that long.
Except for last year.
Well, but the overhead doors were left open.
Yeah.
If you, if you got a garage door that's left open, the temperature inside's gonna be the same as the temperature outside. Um.
Yeah, I mean, those horses will heat that barn no problem with their body heat, so.
I mean, the cobwebs do that too, but.
The cobwebs are extra insulation. But i- it's, the, the key is, you gotta take the effort to close the door. We just need to make sure that they're working, and inform the horsemen, when you get done, close the door.
I mean, that should be in your rules and regs, like, that, it's in my leases, that they have to keep it at, you know, a certain temp, doors need to be closed, they can't leave the water running to stop it from freezing, et cetera, et cetera, like, I have a clause in, in my lease about that. So that if it does freeze, or break, or whatever, it is on the tenant, if they didn't do, like, if they did something I deliberately told them do not do, and this still is a problem, and, you know, like, if they don't pay their power bill, and their heat gets shut off, and the water pipes freeze, that's kinda like on them, you know? But it would be the same thing for the barn, if they are gonna leave the doors open and the pipes freeze, it's on them to repair them, or replace them, or whatever. I mean, I would do that, and then hold them more accountable, because they're the ones in the barn every day, not us. That would be my opinion, anyway.
Dean, is there any way we can go back and find out how much stone dust has been put on in years past? I have no idea, your dad always told me, I'm gonna get stone dust, and I gotta go talk to the city, and that was all I was ever told.
If I'm not mistaken, I think Mr. Norman ordered ten loads. What those loads were, two de- uh, two ton, ten truck, ten times, I, I don't know. But I thought he said ten loads.
Previous Dick Lynch was the man.
Yep.
Who took care of the track.
And they all knew what they were doing, and it was never.
Yes.
And I hate to say it, but both of them are gone.
Yeah, but let me take him off my list.
That, that is maybe something that Brandy can do some research on, to, to see the previous, um, and yes, most of the, up until the last two years, it would've been Richard Lynch and son that handled that, and I guarantee, I guaran-
No bail. It's in the draft.
I guarantee you that his bill probably has a breakout of how many tons he put on each time, and he owned his own road grader, and he.
He done it all.
He came in and road graded, and graded it also, so that would be, would help give us an idea of how much we need, because in the past, the horsemen have always commented that the track was extremely well during the harness racing. Um, and it always would hold up throughout the majority of the year unless we had washouts, and he got the majority of the water rerouted, or put in like up at the top of the hill, the, um, storm, like the stormwater pond, the retention pond to slow it down, um, so that way, the water wouldn't wash out the track.
And he would come in like several weeks before the race, and look at the track, and tell Norman what he need, you know, what he felt was needed to be done to it, and that type of thing, but like John said.
And you can also bring, bring some length back into what's there.
Yes.
But I don't know how much that's gonna take.
Any comments from anybody, 'cause I think we've kinda covered everything.
Clutching for punishment.
I just, nothing major, I just wanted to discuss some of the things you guys talked about, um. The council and the city, this, I agree with everybody that this, this, uh, what do you call this?
The lease.
The lease is the, uh, is old and outdated, in my opinion, and I kinda like the idea of having the lease and then the rules and regulations separate. Uh, right now, some of, some of the rules are crossing over, but if you, we could separate them, um, I think that'd be helpful for everybody. And there's not many people on, in the city, or on the council or anything, that know anything about this kinda stuff, so we're really are looking for your guidance. So I appreciate the communications going on tonight, because it'll be helpful for us to understand how to better move forward, um. And I also think that, I also like the idea of locking the stalls, I know in the agreement now that the stall's unused, it can be used for storage or other things, but I know previous, previous incidences where that's been an issue as well. Um, so I would be in favor of, of locking the stalls. And as far as Mr. Dean said about maybe doing it like a lime truck, I know one of the issues with the stone, stone dust is that there's not many people that do it anymore, your hands are tied, so I don't know if you went the lime, the, the way they use li- put lime on, if you, give you more options, or more, you know, people to choose from, or not, I don't know, but I know, you know, um, it's almost like a dying breed, so, when the people are going, they're going, and, and there's not really many people stepping up to fill the void. And, uh, what was the other thing I had? Oh, um, as far as like the, the money and stuff of it all, like, or, it's in right here that we can't, right now, it's in the lease that we can't, you can't sublease it out to one person, whatever, but, I mean, for, from my perspective as a city, that'd be the easiest thing for us to do. But I don't know if that's something that's realistic for horse barns, I mean, it's not an area that many of us know anything about, so. Um, I think these, I think the discussion tonight was good, and I think it will give us some steps on how to move forward, but I think there's a lot of work still to be done, because this lease is old, and it's been sitting for some time, so. Don't get discouraged, thank you all doing a great job, and if we keep at it, we'll get it all straight, it's not gonna be fixed overnight, but just wanna give you, give, show you guys my appreciation, thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for running in that race.
Oh, yeah.
It was fun, right?
You ready to buy a racehorse?
Nobody, he said we're racing it next year.
Will you?
With a non, with a non-bloody finger next time.
I won't be, I won't be on the council next year.
We still want you.
I think that, um, Stephanie did an excellent job with the book, that was the race program. Um, you had ample number of them, because people always ask for those. Um, as your first year being in charge of the races, I'm sure it was a headache for you, but, um,
It's going to.
I think you did a good job, and if we could, if you need someone to help, now we know then, and you can be looking for someone who could work with you. Um, I think the mayor's race was going a mile ahead and getting the double carts brought down here. I think everybody seemed to enjoy that, and I think that was, the race itself, I think, was an excellent job.
You know, um, Rose Ruff raced way up in Oxon Hill, Maryland, donated those for the use for the day, and, um, I, I had some help from the Glow Relief Association, which was, she was unbelievable in her help, and I need more help. I thought I had, I thought I had all my faces covered, but I did not.
I also think you guys, we had one contact in the city, so you're not trying to talk to Melinda about this, or Brandy about this, or, or Mike about this thing, or Bill about this, it just, things from messages get lost. And, and then something just gets undug because somebody, somebody else is doing it. I think we need to help the city appoint somebody, or you guys who talk to, I know I'm, I'm, I'm your liaison, but I'm not.
You're not a city employee.
I'm not a employee of the city, you know what I'm saying, so.
Yes.
I think, yeah, I agree with that, I think if the city would decide, because in each one of these meetings, we've been given a different name. And that's frustrating, especially for me, because a lot of times, they'll, they'll all contact me to contact the city. And then, I, I know we've heard a few different names each time, so it's, it's just, it'd be nice if we kinda had, if we could get that figured out, we could get it ironed out, how we're supposed to do things and how we're supposed, like, how moving forward.
What's chance to, to do, because I know in the past, if Dad needed something done on the grounds, he always just went and saw Bill. And I would do the same thing.
So would I.
Bill, Bill, we, we, we need these things done. Can we see that that happens? If not, if you don't have enough time, let us know, and we'll see if we can't go with other means to make it happen, um, but also knowing his schedule, we tried to always give him enough time. And it's one of those things, he would say, yeah, I can't do it today, but I can probably get it tomorrow, the next day kinda thing. Um, we, we, we work well together, and moving forward with the city, like you said, get one person and this is our go-to person, and go that route would be, would be greatly appreciated.
One per, and, and if one person doesn't work out, you know, i- if you had, if you and John just talked to Bill, and that'd be fine, and then if I need to talk to Brandy about financing stuff, I mean, that's fine. You know, it just, we could do it that way too, cause I don't really wanna get involved in what y'all do, I don't really care about that. And then if you need something else done, like dealing with the city, with the city hall, I'm in here all the time anyway. So, I mean, we could do it that way too, and then it's not so much on them, but then we can, we can mitigate that between us. Like, if we need ground stuff done, I'll just let you know, or John, no, y'all can talk to Bill, and then if you need something done at city hall, just let me know, and then I'll, I'll do it that way. I can get the checks from you guys and drop them off, I can ask about the leases, you can tell me that you need a rent roll or whatever. I'm in here anyway, so I know kinda who to go to for each thing, because of dealings with the other businesses I have, so we could do it that way too. And then that way, it's not on them to give one person, because really, per se, if their one person is Melinda, you're still, you're not cutting a person out anyway, cause she's still gotta call Bill regardless. So, it's still an extra link in the tree, I mean, we could just kinda try to do that, and then if they talk about how they wanna have it done, then Bill will say, you have to call the office first, that's for them to decide, and then we can just kinda deal with it that way, I mean, cause it, it worked for so long, why change it out, like finding police assistance, I'm not gonna call here first, I'm gonna call the police department.
Correct.
So, I, it's just, what's the difference? You might as well just do that, like, Bill called us how many times today because he needed this, that, or the other thing done, or like, Sunday when we got there and that faucet was wa- running wide open, and I was like, hey, Bill, come fix this, you know? I just, it would've been pointless for me to talk to anybody here, cause I don't have anybody else's cellphone, but, you know, they still have to call Bill, so.
And, and, and even if we were to come to Melinda and say, this is what we need done on the grounds, she's gonna call Bill, Bill's probably still gonna ride by my office and say, okay, Dean, what exactly is it that you want?
He's gonna call us anyway, cause that's what he does, yeah.
That way, he only has to do it one time. He makes sure he's getting done what needs to be done.
Yeah, I mean, we can do that, and then if they have a protocol, employee-wise, they have to do, then, then.
We can follow that.
We can follow that, but until, until they have their protocol, the best thing for us to do is just keep doing what we've been doing until they get their ducks in a row as far as how they want things done.
Well, my idea is because then it, it can't just be like, if you call, what's her name, let's see if we don't have. If you call Jermaine and, and say you need this, this and this done, and he can, I mean, then he could just say, oh, well, uh, I'm not, I'm not who you're supposed to talk to, or you gotta go through a protocol, or whatever, it's a way, it's a way for somebody kinda to take it off their plate, I'm not saying anybody would do that, but, sometimes.
It happens that way, and then we just keep going down the, down the line to get to whoever we need to do, I mean, that's, unfortunately, that's kinda how it works, like, if we don't get an answer, we just keep going until we get an answer. Cause some of this stuff, like, it can't wait, like the generator crashing. I'm gonna call whoever I can get to get that done, or like the faucet running wide open, I'm gonna call whoever I can get to get that water shut off, like, I mean, that's just me, I, I'm not, unless somebody tells me, no, you gotta do it this way, and here's your step-by-step, I'm just gonna call whatever.
Well, we tried to get the water ourselves to cut off, so we didn't have to call the city, but
Yeah.
there was no way we could get it cut off.
Yeah, but I mean, I think it, I, I think it's fine, I think, personally, my, I think every, I think the frustration with a lot of people with this is, this was done a certain way for so long, or neglected for so long, or, you know, Norman just handled it. And now Norman's not here, and now everybody's trying to be like, whoa, we don't know what's going on, and it's a lot of, they're, they're just trying to figure it out, that's all.
People who have done it for so long that knew, like, like the guy you're talking about, like, come there and say, we need this amount of stone dust,
Right.
and whatever, cause he had done it for so long, very deep, that generation was, is fading out, you know what I'm saying, so.
Yeah. So it's tough for us to navigate, try to get it done, yeah.
And it was always done a certain way in the past, because everybody that was involved had been doing it for so long and, and knew what they were working with, and that's not, uh, that's not how it is now.
Right.
So, it's almost me, and so there needs to be a federal organization all around.
Sure.
You know what I'm saying, so that everybody's on the same page, because the way they operated in the past, it operated without, you had to talk about, but everybody knew what they were doing.
It just happened.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to simplify some stuff though, like, you're probably.
You don't have as many more people now as you did thirty years ago and so forth.
Yeah. But, yeah.
Any other comments? My only comment is, Stephanie, I would like to thank you for all that you did to make the horse races. For your first time, you did extremely well, I know there was some hiccups and some heartaches and some stress, um, but you did extremely well. Um, on the other, on the same note, we need to make sure that we get all the information to city hall, so we can get the checks, get all the donations that you've received to city hall, so they can deposit them and all the information and the W nines for all the people, so they can get their checks. Because otherwise, they're gonna start calling, where's my check?
I got it, I got it, oh boy, two twenty on Saturday night, when are we getting paid? I said, let me be the first to tell you, if you ever call my house at two twenty in the morning, and it's not an emergency. It's about to tell you that yourself.
But, so, that's.
I, I do, I do have ninety-eight percent of that done, and I actually got a little bit more information than I was supposed to, cause I didn't realize that the city, I've not raced in the city in a long time, it's been ten plus years. So I neglected to realize that the city only pays the owner, and then it's up to the owner to distribute the purses as that order.
Correct.
Okay, well, I broke it all down.
Okay, um, that way, the, I can believe that's done, so they do one ten ninety-nine to the owner, and then it's up to the owner
I had a three horse race getting nine checks, so yeah, probably.
Yes. Yes.
And we also had ten races, correct?
Right.
And how many horses?
Probably, I don't.
Oh, you don't know?
About fifty. About fifty, oh, yeah.
And, and, and that, 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 that was good, because there was no races with one, just one or two, two horses in a race.
There's no runaways, yeah.
No.
And they, like you said, there was no real runaways, everybody was pretty even. Um, you did have a couple horses that broke, but that's, you can't control that, but for the most part, they were all.
I think there were nine horse running.
Um. Most, mo- most of them were what I classified as a good race.
Yeah. And I mean, that, all the animals and all the people were all pretty well behaved.
And the stands were pretty, a lot more people than what we've ever had before.
I didn't, I didn't get to see it, and I, I hope it was well attended.
Stands were good.
The, the, the stand, the stands were good.
The stands were good. You had, you had, um, when I counted up the person count, it was over six hundred people for the races on Saturday.
Really?
Yep. Yeah, cause I kept doing the B, at a mint lease, so you, you had, it was good.
It was. It, it was well, well attended, because just like Scott mentioned earlier, a lot of the people that used to come to the harness racing, you don't see those faces out there in the stands anymore, cause those people have passed.
Yeah.
It used to be a big thing, and it, it's, I think it hit its bottom, and hopefully it's starting to come back around.
Your advertising was, was excellent, I, you know, for that, uh, but I'll wait till, sorry, Dean, go ahead.
I would love to do more than one day.
You're fine, and so, whatever you're doing, you're doing a good job, and I just wanna let you know.
One day you'll raise. Thank you.
And hopefully, we can continue, and hopefully you're also making notes, so if something happens, somebody's got some notes, so we can keep on going. I think that's about it, anybody else?
I just have, I just have comments, if that's okay.
Okay.
Um, I think Steffi did a good job, I think your advertising was great, I would like to see more advertising from the city moving forward. Um, there was not very much posted from them, um, not very much put out about the, the harness racing or the fair. I think as the city, we could do a little bit better job with that, I know they have a, the Facebook page and website and stuff like that, we can, we could uh, possibly maybe put in a, like a posting request schedule moving forward. Um, I know both ends of town, the banners were put up super late, uh, we could get those in early to help that as well. I think it was very well attended, I think that, um, I think you did a really good job. I know that, that the races that I had been the past couple of years, it, it was not that full, so I think the additions that you did were really good, I wish more mayors would have entered the, entered the race or, or done whatever, but I think that's something we can do, um, more in advance this time. Um, especially now that you've had one, they know what to expect, they can pass that on, cause I think, um, Mayor Taylor, is that who it was?
Yeah.
Um, so Mayor Taylor Kane and Mayor Nock, I think everybody else was council, right?
Yeah, no, but it was, uh, council, it was all there.
So, um, you had two council and two mayors, so I think, I think now moving forward, you'll be able to get more, cause they'll know what to expect.
Right.
I had lots of, um, lots of positive feedback about that, that was pretty cool.
They were very excited about it, from the way.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that the, that the social.
The spectators were into that.
Yes, and the, and the footage that you had gotten from some of the jockeys of filming while they were on the horses, I think Amanda did a few of them and this and that, like, that was pretty cool to be able to put that out as well. And I think if we can also help post that on the city, um, the city pages and things, you know, I think the more we can, we can cross-post, we can, um, the more we can push all as like one, because the horse racing is the city's, right, so the city should push that a little bit more, um, than they did, but I think, I think we can, all of those things, we can very easily work for, forward with a better schedule, at a more set schedule, doing things ahead of time, I think that will greatly help. Um, with all of the things, but I think this year for all of us, just kinda not really knowing what to do, we fumbled through it pretty, pretty decently, and you did a really good job.
Thank you. Thank you, really good.
That's all.
Are you ready?
Okay, so we're done?
Yep.